First 2016 Board of Education meeting. And first thing we need is an agenda.
I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Actually, we are a little ahead of ourselves there. We have to go ahead and just approve the agenda as it's published. You want to do that Jill? Just say yes. Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Off to a good start.
We are, we're off to a great start. We're going to get some business done. Okay, so we have an, all in favor?
Aye.
We have an agenda. So then, our first order of business is recognition of audience. And that, this is four times in which there is not an item on the agenda. So we do have one this evening that is not otherwise on the agenda. So I'll invite Abina Pisa, is that right? I did it, awesome. You can go ahead and come up to the microphone. And you'll have three minutes. Janice is our timekeeper, so she'll hold up little cards to tell you when, how you're doing on your time. And there should be a little button on the microphone to...
I can turn it off.
Oh, perfect, Julie took care of that for you. So it's on and ready to go.
Okay, great. Okay. I am Abina Pisa, and I am a student at Free State High School. And I am here with some other students from Free State High School, including Seamus Ryan. And we have been circulating a petition at Free State and Lawrence High School, calling for a district-wide ban on the Confederate flag. We started this petition in January, when Seamus was suspended for removing the Confederate flag from another student's truck in the Free State parking lot. We, along with hundreds of students from both high schools who have signed the petition, believe that the district has failed its students by ignoring the hostile and disrespectful environment that the Confederate flag promotes. We've heard some concerns about the legality of such a ban. Some people worry about it violating the First Amendment, specifically the freedom of speech. I'd just like to point out that in the Supreme Court case, Tinker versus Des Moines, it was ruled that schools do have the right to discourage the wearing of symbols and messages that materially and substantially interfere with schoolwork or discipline. And that's what the Confederate flag has been doing at the high schools. After the news spread about the Confederate flag's presence in the Free State parking lot, discussions about the flag derailed classes, from mathematics to foreign languages, all over the school. The Confederate flag's presence on school grounds has endangered the quality of learning for students in our district. We, the students of the Lawrence Public Schools District, fail to see how the district can ban hate messages on clothing, but not apply those restrictions to one of the most hateful messages in American history. We fail to see how we can have a ban on gang symbols, but not on those of white supremacy. We fail to see how the schools can ban wearing hats, yet ignore the symbol of slavery on their front door. We strongly urge the Lawrence Public Schools District to ban the Confederate flag from district premises, to ensure a safer and more equal learning environment for all of its students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and for your advocacy. We will be having a policy meeting tomorrow. We basically have various committees that are set up with the school board, and the policy subcommittee will definitely take your input and have a discussion about what the next steps might be. Okay? All right, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. And those items are those that are considered routine and are adopted by one motion unless any board member or the superintendent would request that an item be removed. And then those items would be voted on separately. I think we do have a retirement to recognize this evening, so I'll turn it over to Marcel first.
Yeah, we have a couple retirements. So, the district would like to thank for the years of service and devotion to this community and its schools, Teresa Arevalo for her 26 years, and also Becky Browning for her 23 years of service, and Patricia Florence for her 27 years of service.
Thank you Marcel.
And with that, I'll move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Janice, or any discussion? All right, Janice.
Yes.
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 Okay, next is the report of the President of the Board of Education. And I just want to thank those people in the community that came out to the rally at South Park to welcome the Game On for Kansas Schools group, as they walked through Lawrence on the way to Topeka. And then I also attended the rally that was in Topeka, the Monday following that event, and walked from Topeka High School to the Capitol, with a great group of people, including the LEA president. So thank you Lori for being there, and a bunch of other Lawrence community members for coming out and telling the State House that we care about public education. So that was a really good event. With that, that's all I have tonight, so I'll turn it over to the Superintendent of Schools.
A couple of announcements Vanessa, thank you. It was fun announcing Deborah Williams, a special education resource teacher at Sunset Hill, as our 2016 Lawrence Elementary Teacher of the Year today, was in front of the entire student population, and so the little kids got really excited. We announced the secondary teacher later this week, build a little drama there. Lawrence High and West Middle School chess teams won state championships, and Quail Run finished second in the state at the Kansas Scholastic Chess Association State Tournament on Saturday. We have invited these teams to an April board meeting for recognition. I think the board knows that this, these are, I think, almost entirely run, if not entirely run, by volunteers in the community, and just a really, really neat partnership. Congratulations to the Lawrence High Boys Basketball Team for its third place finish in the 6A tournament. I was at the tournament games, and they got second last year, third this year. Great, great season for the boys. If anyone gets, anyone wants to get their hands dirty, Quail Run is hosting a school garden work day on Saturday, 10 to noon. Gloves, bring gloves, tools if you want to pitch in and help. And Bike Walk KC is working with 4th and 5th graders in four of our elementary schools, Broken Arrow, Langston Hughes, Quail Run, and Schwagler, in a pilot bicycle education program that we're looking to expand district-wide. This is part of the Safe Routes to School partnership with the Health Department. Board members, you should have or will soon receive invitations from the Health Department to see the BLAST program in action Friday morning, 8 o'clock, Broken Arrow. Did you already get that? Great.
I'm in the mail today, I got an email about it as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Board commentary.
I just wanted to advise everyone that the anti-common core bill is going to be on general orders tomorrow, so if you have an opportunity to email our legislative delegation and other legislators later tonight, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, then we will move on to our first report. Sorry? We'll move on to our first report, which is Superintendent Leadership Transition for Kyle Hayden. And congratulations, I think this is the first time we've had a meeting where you are officially the next superintendent, so maybe we should clap or something, I don't know.
No, you're fine. Thank you very much, though. So Kyle Hayden, Assistant Superintendent Business and Operations. Want to talk to you a little bit about my leadership transition over the next few months, as Dr. Dole has until June 30th, I want to remind him of that continually, he has until June 30th to continue working. And, but, first of all, also, I want to thank the board for the commitment to the whole search process. You guys put in endless hours, and I think it's an opportunity to remind everybody that you're volunteers. And I don't know if you probably have, some of you probably have counted the number of hours, but it's, it was significant, so I appreciate that. And I think it makes it more meaningful, actually, to be standing here and talking about that because of that, so I thank you for that. And I sent you guys a letter this week, and I want to reiterate some of the things I said in there, maybe get a little bit more specific about the transition plan and some of the things I'm thinking about. And I hope to give a report periodically over the course of next few months, maybe not every board meeting, but kind of give you some feedback and some of the specific things that I may be engaged in. But, so, basically, in the coming months, there, you know, there's going to be probably more of a specific focus on the engagement part of the board goals. And I've had some opportunity to reflect upon the interviews, and, and think about not only that, but, you know, some of the input that came through the stakeholder survey. So through that whole process of, you know, filling out the application, what you guys did as far as engaging the community with feedback, going through the interviews, there's, you know, there was, there was messages that I received. And so, very much like you interviewed me, I'm also interviewing you amongst the other interview teams. And, and, you know, some of the things that came out of that was, you know, some issues that may revolve around climate and culture, as our, as far as our district is concerned. And, you know, there's specific things out there that I think that are, we can grab from those surveys and, and the input that we received. But there's also some things in there that I think are difficult to quantify. And so there's, you know, different statements are made, and so I think that's something that we should think about and consider would be an outside survey done by a professional firm, that could help us really kind of hone in on some specifics that, not only concerns, but also, you know, the good things that we're doing, and get some feedback on, you know, some of the initiatives that we're spending a lot of time with, and reinforce those or not. And then basically use some of that information to help us with the board goal-setting process. So, and I, I hope to kind of look at the next month and maybe seeing who can do that for us, and then consulting with Vanessa and Marcel, at least from a board officer standpoint, and Dr. Dole, and think about that a little bit. And, you know, there's companies we've used in the past that have helped us when it came to the bond issue and LOB election, and I think that helped us measure, you know, where we stood with things, and maybe look at things that we needed to address. So hopefully, we can engage in that type of a conversation. So, I think the timing for that type of survey, I don't necessarily know. I think it's a matter of when we engage some of those folks, they can help us with determining what a timeline would be. I don't know if the spring is the best time to, to survey folks. It may be early fall that we want to consider that, but I'm not going to necessarily jump to any conclusions at this point in time when it comes to that. So that's one of the things I've been thinking out. The other thing is, I've been thinking about how I intentionally reach out to people, and I think I articulated that a little bit through the interview process, and I think that's important. And I look at this as, is kind of in some phases. I think there's an initial phase of almost the, you know, you hear about those, the term "the 100 days." So I think there's 100 days from now until June 30th before I really officially take over. There's some things that I can do. And some of those things I'm thinking about is, is getting in front of staff in some capacity. And in particular, we have building leadership teams in all of our schools that are pretty well-representative of the population, whether it's grade levels or departments or what have you. So I'll talk with principals about, you know, what that could look like. I do want to try to focus those conversations a little bit, though, around our board goals and our board goal-setting process, and gather feedback, so that it's similar to what we've done with our annual feedback sessions, where we bring a cross-section of our staff into a meeting at the end of June, actually, when is that? End of May. Yeah, end of May, 1st of June, we typically do that. And some of the new board members probably don't even know that we do that. But fills this room, usually there's 40 people or so that, you know, and it's classified staff, it's certified staff. I think we've had some, some parents involved too at times, so. So we can think about even that meeting and what that representative group looks like, and continue with that process, and maybe we have more than one of those, to involve a few more people. But then also the specific meetings that I go out to buildings and talk to staff. So, some of the right-nows for me, one primary one is, is replacing myself. So, I've had some thoughts about that, had some time to reflect on what that should look like, and who that might possibly be, and could have an announcement very soon about that. And we'll talk to board officers, obviously, before we make that decision. But been a lot of conversation with Dr. Dole and my leadership team to get their feedback on where we should go with that. The other thing is, you know, really critical, we have a new principal to hire in the next week at West, and those key positions, those leadership positions are invaluable to us. So, whether it's replacing me or hiring a principal, and I plan to be involved with that, with Dr. Dole, as that decision is made. Some of the other things, if I look at the next phase, would be the next 100 days, so beginning in July, looking at, you know, July and August and September, getting into the start of school, and who may, who else needs to be involved in conversation. So, I've had different community groups already reach out to me. I plan to potentially get in front of some of those this spring, for sure, in July and August, and so those opportunities I know will come. If I don't have them reach out to me, I'll reach out to them and hopefully have those conversations. Some other things I've thought about would be some lunch and listen sessions potentially around the district. I know even in this building, there's different groups of people that, that eat at certain times, and they're very habitual about that. I think that I wouldn't just invite myself, but I'll ask if it's okay, I guess, if I just sit with them. So, I think those are some informal opportunities I can put out there. I know that there's other things that you could do, you know, whether it's coffee with the communities, or, you know, different things like that, that you make yourself available. And once again, I don't necessarily have a specific idea of what that looks like, but I think that's something that we can develop over time. And I also mentioned the conducting the professional survey. But I think that, one of the things I've had an opportunity to kind of reflect on through the interview process a little bit more, is recognizing a few things, and I wanted to point this out to you, because I think it's really important. One of the things I recognize, I think that, is that we have a talented staff. And we have to find a way to make sure that we're reaching out to them and engaging them in our processes. And even thinking about, you know, our committees, and making sure we have represented, representation from a staff on those committees, I think we do a pretty good job in most cases. Had a conversation with Vanessa this last week, when she was thinking about, you know, one of our committees in particular, the Finance Advisory Council. You know, we've expanded the representation of that council, but there's no staff members on it. And so, I think that's something that we can engage, you know, staff in, and probably get a couple representatives in that group. The other thing is, you know, we're in a pretty challenging time, and you talked about the webinar and, and listening to what's going on at the state level, and that takes its toll on people. I think we have to recognize that. You know, it's not just us, from a leadership level, that we're the ones engaged in that. That trickles down to our staff, and so I think that needs to be a recognition, and that they're impacted in sometimes a negative way also. The other thing that, you know, I engaged in a conversation with Dr. Dole about this, and, and some of our other district leaders, you know, through the board goal-setting process the last several years, we've had a lot of new initiatives, and we've pushed people. And, you know, we've collectively made decisions to do that. And when you push new initiatives, and you're really driving things in a certain direction, that includes change. And the change process is hard. And I'm not by any means, you know, saying that we need to put the brakes on stuff. I think we need to continue to push, because I think so many things that we're doing are the right things. And I've been involved in many of those things, in pushing those board initiatives, so, I think, but that needs to be a recognition. And sometimes what happens with all those initiatives and going forward, is that there are concerns that are sometimes raised, and people, you know, maybe want us to push the pause button, and I don't think that's necessarily right, as far as our reaction to that. But we still need to listen and engage in, in those conversations. The other thing I was thinking about that I think sometimes we forget is, you think about all the disruptions we've had to the school operations and the classrooms over the last couple years with school construction. And, you know, I'm up here, I give those reports, and we talk about, and I'm going to give a couple here in a little bit, and we talk about, you know, just, you know, the bids and the design process, and not very often do we talk about what's happening during construction, and what's impacting, how it's impacting staff and students on a day-to-day basis. So it's just another one of those things that I think is, is a recognition of what we've been kind of dealing with over the last couple years, and how it can create some, some hardship. And then the last one really is, and you've heard me say this, and I've written it in my letter, I've, I've said it to, in interviews, I just think we need to continue to reiterate how important and how significant each one of our people is to, to our schools. And then ultimately, don't lose sight of the fact that it's all about student achievement. And we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for, you know, our students, and the schools wouldn't exist if, if it wasn't for them. So, you know, that's why we're here, going to maintain the focus of that, and through every one of these decisions, as we move forward. So, appreciate the opportunity, looking forward to it, looking forward to the challenges, and working with you. Questions?
Any questions? I think you answered quite a few, so, over the past couple weeks, so, yeah. But I think we'll expect then, kind of every board meeting to have kind of a bit of an update from you, if there's something substantial to report.
Yeah, I think so.
If this format works for everyone, we were thinking that might be a good one going forward. Tell he's in this chair. Okay, cool. Thank you. So next is the approval of Apple Technology Purchase and Equipment Lease, and for that we will have Jerry Kimball, Jennifer Festinton, and I think you said not Kathy, right? And you want to sit down for this one too? All right, and those two people.
We have a new Jennifer.
I guess so.
Last month, we talked about some of the vision for the Learning Forward, Future Ready, and tonight we're going to talk about how we have gone through the process and the details on the device that we are recommending. And so, we would like to start out with a sheet that I think you've all received, that has the device comparisons on it. We compared the iPad, the laptop, and Chromebooks. And we compared them in, I believe it was 23 different areas. And so, I don't want to go through the entire sheet, but if you have questions that you would like to ask me about a particular area, please do. Otherwise, I wanted to talk a little bit about cost, first of all, because I don't think that we have talked about that before. The iPad Air 2 is regularly $574. Apple has a special that they're offering to school districts right now, until Friday, and it's $399, and it is their latest iPad that they have on the market. A laptop, an 11-inch, would be $764. And then we looked at Chromebooks as well. You can get a Dell Chromebook for $199, but we also looked at one that would have a sufficient amount of memory on it, that would equate to what the iPad Air has on it, and it would be $999 if it had the 64GB of storage on it, so.
Hey Jerry, can you flip the slide to the next slide with the comparison?
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
All right. Then, I wanted to point out durability, because that was one area that I think we need to discuss. In 2013, when we rolled out the first 40 classrooms with, we had Chromebooks at that time, over 30% of them were broken, we had cracked screens, we had keyboards missing. We spent a sufficient amount of time working on repairs and sending them back in. We've also had a lot of strain on the network with the Chromebook. We've also had the iPads and the MacBooks, and we have had about 1% breakage with those. So, we have, we've recognized that, and we've experienced all of that. Testing, I wanted to say that map K through 2 does not, is not supported on the iPads. The Chromebooks do not have all testing available. The laptops do. I will say that on our assessments this spring, the schools that have used the iPad have had the best experience. There have been a lot of bugs in the kite system, and we have gone through and seen all of those. Southwest did a great job. They asked the students to use the iPad, but when it came to the writing portion, they had the students write it out, and then they keyed it in, which served two purposes. Number one, if something went down, they still had their work. But number two, the kids had to reread it. So that was a good thing for students as well. Anything else on this first page that you would like to address?
I do have a question. You know, what, one of the frustrations I have with iPad is that it doesn't support Flash, and there are times when there are things that I want to do that I need that for. So, how much of a factor is that in some of the, like, for example, in the digital textbooks and stuff like that? Are they using Flash in those?
Okay, so...
And how do, how do we overcome that issue?
Did we lose our connection there? Okay, so Flash, that is a great question. It will never be supported on an iPad, because it takes up too much memory. The other thing is that educational resources are recognizing this, and they are building their programs in HTML5, so that we do not have to use Flash. In the next few years, Flash will probably not be available on most things, but right now, we're in a transition period, getting through that, and there are some programs that do use Flash. That's why we want to keep the laptops available in the building. If a teacher has something that they really want to use, and it does, you need Flash, then they can pull a laptop to get that done. All right, other questions on this?
I did have a quick question about the device.
Yes.
So, Apples do not have USB drives, so if we wanted to connect anything, USB is pretty much a universal...
Sure.
...you know, device connector. So what are we doing to get around that? Are we going to have to purchase adapters?
They do have the external adapter, and we would probably ask, what is the, the need for the USB, because that would depend on what solution we gave you to use. If you needed to store something, we would ask that students use one of our cloud storages that is available to them. If they wanted to import something on, then we could use the connector and get it on that way.
Are they able to connect to any other device via, so if there's, is there any interoperability with these devices? A lot of times you use a USB to connect an iPad, or some sort of a pad to, say, a larger monitor, or to connect to another computer. Is there any method of doing that?
Sure. So in the classroom now, what we're utilizing is Apple TV, which they can project onto a larger monitor, or, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that is, that, so that would be the solution in the classroom, wouldn't, if the child wants to go home and, and connect it to anything. They don't have any ability to connect it to a larger monitor. A lot of times when I'm using a smaller device, I will connect it to a larger monitor or a keyboard.
Right.
So you can't even plug a keyboard into it?
So we do, yes.
You do have a keyboard?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We have, we have 500 that we're going to order, which I'll get to in just a little bit. And then we're going to order some additional ones that are a different look, so that we will have those available too, for students. And those do plug in, but they do not use a USB to plug in.
Is it all Firewire?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it only operates with Apple products? Is Firewire...
Oh, no, the keyboards are Belkin.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just know that not very many devices other than Apple uses Firewire. That's, they're traditionally the only ones that use Firewire.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, all right. Other questions on this page? So we also looked at the cost comparison, and the unit cost if we traded them in. One of the things... One of the things that I think is of value when you do a lease purchase is that you set aside money every year to donate for your technology. So, we would, the lifespan of the MacBook Air is four years. iPad is four years. I just spoke with a district today that is in their fourth year of their iPad, and they're doing well. In Chromebook, the life expectancy is three years. So we took the initial cost of the device, and Joe actually put this together this afternoon, so I thank him for doing that. And then, with our lease purchase, at the end of four years, we can either buy each device for $1 or we can trade them in and use the cost that we would get from those devices towards a next purchase. So, we did talk with a dealer today that refurbishes Mac devices. And we found out that the trade-in value would be $330 on a MacBook Air and $140 on an iPad. The research we did on Chrome after three years, the trade-in value was not good at all. So, that creates the unit cost per year of a MacBook Air would be $137, iPad $91, and Chromebook $123.
What does software enrollment cost?
Okay, so, on the Chromebook, every year, in order to enroll it in the management, you have to pay $50 for that. On our JAMP software, that is the mobile management, device management system, is $14. And for the iPad, it's $7 per device, per year.
So that's, is that the software you use to manage all the devices on the network?
Yes, we use an MDM, which is a mobile device management system, which is wonderful because we can deploy apps that way, send them out. Another thing is, when we have a request for an app, the district purchases it. We get volume-priced purchasing, so we get half price of what a consumer would pay for an app. Then we can push it out to devices. At the end of the year, if I'm a fifth grade teacher and I have an app that I really like for my class for a subject area, then we retrieve all of those apps again. We own them, and so we can redeploy them to the next fifth grade class so that we're not having to pay for it every single year. So we own those and put them back out. We will also have a committee that would choose what the foundational apps would be on all of the computers. We would roll those out initially, and then teachers can request additional apps as they need them. Their building principal would need to approve that, and then once they are requested, we would push those out to them. And I think I just talked about the apps, so. Other things I wanted you to know about the apps. A question we have been asked, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. I'm going to go back. Frequently asked questions. As we walk through the process, we collected all of the questions that we have been asked. And these are the most frequently asked questions that we have been given. So I would like you to look over that list. And I thought I would move on and talk about all of the other pieces. And then if we'd like to come back to these questions, we can address those at that time. So, apps. One of the questions is, will students be able to download apps on their device? And the answer is yes or no, depending what we want to do. Typically, they can download free apps. We can place restrictions in our management system that says that they cannot go to the App Store if we do not want them to. Typically, we want to make sure that students have what they need with the least amount of restrictions. We do have restrictions that we do not download any apps that are not available for students 17 and above. So, we do restrict that. We can restrict to just one machine or a group of machines, the apps that can be downloaded. Sometimes, parents may want an app for their student. And they can download that, but they'll need to tie it to an Apple ID. Most parents wish not to give their child their credit card, so there's ways around that. You can also buy the iTunes Store cards and they can download apps. That way, you could give them $10 worth of apps to download. But, we would like to make it known that we would not expect anyone to have to pay for any apps. We will download the foundational apps, and then teachers may request additional apps that they need. Families would not be responsible to pay for apps or to download those.
So I do have a question about the free apps.
Sure.
My boys have iPad minis and there are lots and lots of free apps that are
Yes.
just kind of junk. And they love them. And they spend, you know, it's a constant struggle
Sure.
to keep them from spending too much of their time doing those sorts of things. So, so how, so how will we, in our system, is there a way to set it up so kids aren't allowed to download, you know, 15 versions of Clash of Clans? I mean, you know, like, how does, I guess I'm trying to picture how this is going to work.
Right. We can limit them. We can put particular apps, we can blacklist them and say that they're not going to be downloaded. So we can do those kinds of things.
For example, like Snapchat is free, is a free app, right?
Right. And if we would choose not to have that, if that was a problem, we can blacklist it and take it off of the device. Okay, so the next screen is what exactly is in the lease? There are 5,000 iPads. Not all of them, of course, are going to the middle schools. 612 teachers would receive an iPad, the new blended classrooms, TOS's learning coaches. Another question has been raised about Paris checking out devices. And so we would have devices available in the building for Paris to check out and use during the school day. And high school checkout devices so that we can increase the number of devices that our high school students can check out to use in their learning. 5,000 iPad cases, 500 laptops, 500 keyboards. And then we will have an additional set of keyboards that have a different look so that students have a choice. And you may wonder why 500 keyboards? As we visited with schools, the number that keeps arising is 10% of the students use a keyboard. Several schools told us that they overpurchased at first. And so they had a closet full of keyboards collecting dust. They said, I would recommend that you not overpurchase, underpurchase, and then if you need more, you can get them and the turnaround time is quick. So, we would certainly do that. Also in the lease is a project manager that assists us in a successful rollout. They help us to see all of the ins and outs, because this is what they do. Such things as contacting the police department, letting them know, we have a one-to-one. If you find iPads or they're reported, you know, make sure you get back to us. Also, talking to pawn shops and telling them that this, what the school device is and letting those people know in the community. And it also includes that onsite support so that we could have people coming in and working with teacher leadership groups on tech integration. The next thing is a concern about how will we filter students when they are off-campus? We are working right now with a group that is actually coming onsite next week. They're letting us try a cloud filtering system from now until the end of the school year. This system looks really incredible. It has a natural language processing algorithm so it can detect if people are being bullied or if students are showing signs that maybe they're going to harm themselves or others. And then they send a flag to let you know that that's going to happen. This also has a parent report, so parents could receive an email or they can go online and look at the screen and see every site that their student has been in and what they have been doing on the web. So, we are working with them. It looks promising and seeing what that'll be like, and we would like to test drive that yet this year. Home Wi-Fi access availability. We have had really good luck with the Kajits. Kajit is, they have a special price point right now. It used to be that the little box cost $129. They're actually selling the little box now for $9.99. I asked them for some quotes. If you would take the total, if I would look at the national averages of students that do not have access. And remember how hard it is to find out really who doesn't have access? So I took the national average, and if we would take, which is 20% of our free lunch students. So for the middle schools and high schools, that would be 400 students. So I asked Kajit, what would the cost be if we had 200 of those devices? I know it's not the perfect scenario, but it is a step, and we hope that not everybody needs one every night. So it would be a checkout system. So that would be right under $40,000 if we wanted to invest in that to make sure that they had Wi-Fi service off-site. Having said that, one of the reasons the recommendation is for the iPad is because the iPad has the iTunes University in which students can cache the materials that they need for class. The thing that we found appealing in that is that teachers can put all of the information into that iTunes University, push it out to the students, and it caches it immediately. So when the student gets home, they do not need Wi-Fi access to work on their homework. And when they get back into the school district, it caches it and it's there, the work that they did that night. I also wanted to visit with you about policy. We are working on the acceptable use policy, making sure that we are SIPA, COPA, and FERPA compliant. We have a new proposed policy that is actually going to the policy committee tomorrow. So you'll get to look at that firsthand. We would also work immediately with our high, or our middle school principals talking about what are some of those details that we need to have in that student handbook so that students are aware. I also wanted to let you know that next month, the second meeting in April, our Digital Citizenship Group will be here to tell you all of the things that we've been doing already this year to promote digital citizenship and train parents about digital citizenship in the schools. The last thing I wanted to, to talk about is, and then we'll go back to those questions because we can certainly answer any of those as well. But the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is the new classroom management system. So when a group of students comes into the classroom, the teacher's iPad, oh, I guess I shouldn't have done that. The teacher's iPad will have a picture of each student on there. It will also show the teacher what site they are on. The teacher can push the button and say, Vanessa, that is not the app we're working on today. Also, the teacher can push out internet websites immediately to everyone. So no more, are we wasting time saying, I can't get on, I don't know how to use this, they won't let me on. The teacher pushes it out. They can also push out something that they want everyone to work on and lock it down so that we know that students are engaged in that activity at that time. So it does give teachers control over what's happening and lets them see what's happening at a glance. So, would you like to go back to questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, I've received, as I'm sure many have, several emails from teachers who are working with these iPads in the classrooms right now. And there, there's been a lot of concerns. And I'm sure you've heard some of these, and I'm hoping that we could address them, that this is what we're going to do. But my biggest concern is surrounding the fact that we're working in a, in a very proprietary closed environment. We're showing these children nothing but Apple OS. And I think that it might be something that we could look at. I would advocate for a much more even approach where we can make both of the more popular OS systems available to the children, which would be, well, when we're talking about personal computers, Microsoft and Apple. If we're talking about in the business environment, Linux is by 75% the most popular operating system. So if we were going to talk about equal, that might be something we would want to throw in there as well. And we could get three separate OSs that the children would then be able to learn. So we're throwing our hat all in one ring, and I've just been talking, so.
So I would like to address that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sure. So, we also will have the Microsoft Office Suite available for students to use. And a lot of our teachers now already like Google Classroom and are using it. And so we would be operating in those two environments as well. Today, our tech team met and we were looking at the Lawrence Journal World, some of the comments. And we looked at the Linux system. We talked about that as a tech team. We only have one tech person on staff that is familiar with that system. And so we feel like it would take a lot of education to get our staff ready for that. They were also concerned about touching every single device. And this is why Joe's here, because he's in the weeds on this. Is there anything else you want to add to that, Joe, on the Linux?
Couple of things real fast. With Linux, we would have to touch every single device after it comes out of the box. And so we would have to reinstall a different OS. We'd have to take either.
What, I'm sorry, just want to interrupt really quick. If we purchased computers that were preloaded with a Linux OS, which there are available, why would we have to then touch them? There are many, many devices that are available. I run a completely open source shop with thousands of devices. Some of them do come preloaded.
Sure. And part of that is to get it back onto our network. So it's enrolled in our network and a part of something that we can manage. And then, along that thought, one reason we like one device, not because we like one device more than anything else, or we want to force anything, but it's easier for teachers if there's that one device in the classroom. Because then they only have to create lessons or teach to that one device as opposed to having to troubleshoot three different devices or do different things like that.
Okay, and I would just say, why Apple versus Windows versus Linux? It just seems to me, of the three, Apple is the most closed and proprietary of those three systems and the hardest to work with. And I do understand you're saying that we're going to work in the, in the Microsoft Office Suite. That's not the OS.
And so, well, and the other thing I wanted to point out is that our CTE classes will use whatever OS system, whatever device they need. And we realize that those would be different than Apple devices.
Okay, and I like.
So they would have that opportunity as well.
Okay, so that, but that wouldn't be the majority of the time that they're working. It just seems like we're, and I'm sorry, I will. It just seems like we're putting all of our eggs in one basket. And I'm getting, I'm hearing a lot of complaints from teachers that this is not maybe the basket we should be focusing on.
And I think one of the things that has been complicated this year has been that device management system, getting the apps out in a timely manner. That is all changing, and we'll have a whole new process that we will start as soon as it is released this spring, and it should be much, much better. I will agree, that has been clunky and frustrating for teachers.
I just want to say one more thing, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead. I know that very recently, the LA Unified School District sued Apple over a lot of curriculum problems. I just want to make sure that we're not getting ourselves into something that we can't get out of and have to go down some very difficult path.
I have several questions and several concerns. I'll save the concerns for later. But one, Joe, Joe, is it, could you remind me who you are?
Sure. Joe Smizer, Technology Integration Support Specialist. So I do a lot of technology training for the district.
Okay, thank you. Have you surveyed students about what they want?
We have.
Because I have.
Okay, all right.
But go ahead.
Oh, sure. So, I think one of the things that we're looking at is if we would ask people what they want right now, it's probably a laptop. is if we would ask people what they want right now, it's probably a laptop because they're comfortable with that. As we are looking at where the future is going and what we see happening in the ed tech world, we see that more apps are being created for mobile devices. And so we feel like that is the way that that world is going.
So I've done an informal survey. Probably 20, 25 parents and kids, middle school kids, having one myself, they all want laptops. And they don't, it's not the apps, it's the fact that they find the iPad difficult to use.
Okay.
You know, if you have to type a 10-page term paper, typing it on an Apple, on, I'm sorry, not Apple, but an iPad is inconceivable to me. So that's a question I had. We've developed a relationship with Apple. I know there was a, there was a field trip in California a couple of years ago. I don't know if you were on that or not. I think, I know, Rick, you were there. Field, field trip?
Side talking, apologize.
So you're on your, you're on your device. No, there was, there was a field trip to California a few years ago and we visited Apple. And I think there's been a relationship developed. Have we reached out to Google? Have we seen if there's any relationship there to be built?
Yes, actually, I did reach out and ask them if they would come and visit with us about the, not Google, but it was Dell. And.
Right, but I'm asking specifically about Google.
And, oh, well, Google, we have reached out to Fort Hays State University. And actually, April 1st and 2nd, we're having a Google Apps for Education here. And so we'll be working.
But, but no, I guess I'm asking about the, the Google Corporation.
Yes, I talked with Jamie Cassup, are you, do you know who he is?
I don't.
Oh, he is known as the Google Evangelist for.
And he works for Google?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes, yes. So I have exchanged emails with him and talked to him about using Google in our schools, yes.
And what was the sort of, the take-home message from that, that conversation?
Well, I think that our teachers love that Google environment. They love the Google Classroom. And it seems like they can have the best of both worlds. If they have a Mac device and the Google Classroom, they can work in both worlds.
So if, if we could maybe start going through those questions, I think that would be helpful.
You bet.
Because I think we all have a lot of follow-up questions. But if you're getting a lot of these standard questions, those of us that came to the tech day, some of them were answered. But for the community's sake and for the board members who couldn't attend, I think it would be helpful to start there.
Real quick, Shannon had her hand up next, so let's let Shannon go. And then Jessica will definitely hear that concern and address it. So go ahead, Shannon.
I just wanted, wanted to get a better understanding of Blackboard and it's, how well it works on an iPad. I know my own kids, when they used Blackboard at home, it's been on a PC, but.
Right. The Blackboard app can be clunky. They're working on it. So our department suggests that you go through an internet browser to get to the Blackboard.
Okay, so you can do it over the internet on the iPad, okay. Is there any content that we currently have loaded on a, this is one of the questions I heard, heard some.
Right.
And so I'm curious about, you know, what, if any, content we have loaded through Blackboard already that wouldn't work as well on an iPad versus a PC.
And that certainly can be, there could be some content, I'm, I'm not going to say that there wouldn't be.
Okay. Would that be because it's flash-based or?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Okay, we'll start with the first one. Will our infrastructure be able to support one-to-one? If you were in the building today, you would see all kinds of guys everywhere with all kinds of devices and they were hooking up. And so the WITS team is here, they're in district, and they're starting that process. They are well aware that we want to go one-to-one. And they will be giving us their recommendation for what we need to do to make sure that we can support one-to-one at all four middle schools. The second question, would the mobile device replace all current devices? No, it would not. We would have the lap cart, laptop carts available. Of course, CTE will have specialized technology that they need to use. And the goal is to enhance learning and make sure that students have a device. But we certainly recognize that one size does not fit all. That's why we will have the other devices available to students. Flash, are we understanding? We're good there, okay. Tablets do not have external keyboards, are we good there? And we do have.
I think Shannon might have a question about that.
One quick question.
Sure.
So we're going to get 500 keyboards, is that, is that going to be, kids get them based on requesting them? Or how are we going to distribute those?
What we thought we would do is have them check them out in the library. Typically, kids say that they don't want to carry the keyboard around with them.
Okay.
It's the added bulkiness, I guess. So they could check them out if they needed to type something, or they could also check out a laptop to type.
Okay.
And Jerry, so if, let's say a teacher knew that they had a writing assignment in class. So teachers could check out like 25 or 30 or whatever and have those keyboards available as well.
Absolutely, yes.
And Jerry, I think it's also the, the 500 are to replace those Dells that everybody knows don't work. So those old Dells.
The 500 laptops.
What did I say?
We're on keyboards, Dr. Dolan.
Got you, sorry.
But you're right.
Right, I know.
But you're right.
Rick, you're referring to the Dell laptop carts that we're replacing with the MacBook Air.
There you go.
Okay, alright. Okay.
Can we print from the devices? Our network is not set up to print from an iPad, but it is, we do have a two-click resolution that you can use to get a document printed, if you need one printed. You could save it to your Google Drive and then print it from there. If it's an image that you want, you can take a screenshot, save it in your images and, and upload it and print it from there. If the device is lost, stolen, or damaged, what happens? So first of all, we can locate it when it tries to connect again. Wherever it tries to connect, we can find out where that is, so we can locate it that way. I mentioned earlier that we would alert local authorities that we were rolling out the iPads and so they would be aware of that. Damages, what will happen? If we went with this recommendation is that if a screen was cracked or broken, the student would take it in. We can send it off, have it repaired. In the meantime, will the student be without a device? No, we can have devices available. Because they have a profile on the mobile management system, it will say Marcel had these apps on his last one. When we, when you log into your new one, you push all that out there, so you really shouldn't miss a beat. We will have to have the conversation with schools though. When would students be responsible? It's much like a textbook. We've had teacher manuals fall in a bathtub before. You know, when, when is someone responsible for paying for, for that? And those would be conversations that we need to have.
So a follow-up on that, because we, I have heard quite a few parents worried about that.
Right.
Being responsible for that expense.
Right.
And for something that they didn't necessarily want their kid to have.
Right.
So then how do we as a district really deal with that?
Yeah, I think that, so what we did was, we'll have some money set aside that we can pay for repairs out of our technology fees. We will use that, which parents are already paying, so we'll just transfer that there, utilize that money. We can have the device repaired twice. On the third time, then we have to pay extra for that. And so it, it seems fair to me that we'd repair a device twice and the third time maybe we'd have to pay for that.
I'm, I'm, is there some sort of, okay, thing, since I can't think of another word, to put on top of the screen, if you walked through and did a visual survey of 12 and 13-year-old boy phones?
Right.
None of them are uncracked, so that's, and, and, and if you fix it, it will be cracked again. So is, is there, is that included in the price?
In the case.
Oh, the case is the thing that protects the screen, somehow the screen.
Yeah. Does it have, have you seen that case, the sheet? It, does it have that?
It does, yeah.
So based on other districts, other national averages, you know, we're not the only district that's done this. I mean, what's the percentage that is out, that this happens to, right? The percentage of devices that get broken, what's the?
3%.
And then, this sort of goes along with this, but. At the, so the kids get them at the beginning of the school year, they check them back in at the end of the school year.
Yes.
They don't, do not keep them over the summer.
No.
Okay.
We pull all those apps off, like I talked about earlier, and redeploy them, clean the device, get it ready to go back out. Although, we do want students to keep the same device because we feel like that gives buy-in to that device. They take better care of it if they know I'm getting the same one next year.
Okay.
So each year they would have the same device. Let's see. What are we on? What if a student forgets their iPad at home?
This is my biggest question.
So, just as kids forget textbooks, they'll forget iPads. We will have additional ones in the building available. Yet I think sometimes that's going to be a teacher-by-teacher. We all had teachers that said, yes, grab a textbook, and others that said, no, learn a lesson. So I think that will be a teacher-by-teacher decision as to how that's handled. But we will have additional ones available for students.
And it kind of goes along with the next question. And these are really the kind of personal responsibility questions, but if, if it comes to school, but it's not charged.
Okay, so in our parent meeting, one of the things, one of the first things we want to tell parents is, set up a designated area where the student charges their device every night and leaves it. And the bedroom really isn't a good place because we don't want them on the device all night long. It needs to be somewhere central where the parents can see it. And leave your cord at home, because that'll be the number one thing that is stolen. And, and not with, you know, they don't mean to steal it, but I don't have a cord, oh, here's one, I'll just take this one. So leave your cord at home. Many schools have juice bars where they set up areas with extra cords and students can plug in and get recharged. And so we will work with Buildings and Operations about setting up some different juice bar areas so students can get their devices recharged.
You know, Jerry, I appreciate that you will ask parents to have a designated place and not be in the, in the bedroom. Kids are going to have an iPad, they're going to be up to all hours in the bedroom, no matter what we tell parents.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't know that that's any different though than, than having their own laptop. Because I, I could foresee that with, with my kid. No matter what device we give him, he's going to want to have it and I'm going to have to have that. So that, that's a, that's a, that's a, you know, do we do a one-to-one or we not do a one-to-one kind of question? I don't know that it's app, it's device-specific.
Well, I think we all have our own anecdotes, you know, and speaking from my vantage point, the laptop actually never goes to my daughter's bedroom, but the iPad does. Because it's just so easy to use. So different, you know, different people have different experiences.
So we will give them hints and ideas that they can employ if they choose to, but it's their choice. Downloading apps, are we good?
I think so, yeah.
I think the one question I have, I, I do think that we probably need to have ahead of time a pretty set plan on what apps we're, we're just not going to allow to be pushed out in the first place. And I'm wondering what the, what process we'll use to, to make that determination. Is that something that's already?
Oh, sure.
Being discussed in terms of stuff that like we don't want them to have, like Snapchat. Or I, I'm sure there's a bazillion, there's one that comes to mind that my kid is using right now, it's called Musically. We don't want our kids to have that on their iPad. It's going to be highly disruptive at school, so.
And so, apps are being created all the time.
Right.
So when people hear of something that is disruptive and yet it's available for 17 and under, we like to be.
And it's free, yeah.
Yes, we like to be notified of that. But to answer your question, our, our group, we will have leadership teams in all four of the middle schools. They will come together and we will make that foundational app choice.
So that's going to.
At first, we'd like to, to limit it to that because you just don't need, I mean, it's overwhelming as we're getting started.
So that'll happen like over the summer or already happening?
In the spring.
In the spring, okay, thank you.
And so Jerry, you did say that students will be allowed to download whatever free apps that aren't necessarily on this blacklist that they want? And then if they wanted to spend their own money or their own family's money to load up?
They could.
And is that a decision that we could change? I guess what I would like. Okay, I mean, I think we should have that discussion and I think that there are some policy level decisions.
So I think the policy committee would be great to do that. And we can lock it down, we can lock down the App Store if we choose to, or you can't even see it to get into it.
Right, I'm not sure, yeah, I think we should discuss it. Because I think that there are some benefits to having it open and having people download what they want. I think that there's also some equity concerns with having certain kids with like, you know, lots of funds to have whatever they want and then other kids that have just whatever is provided that we would want to address in a more coherent way at some point.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So that would be a good topic for the policy committee to discuss.
Yeah, Jill, I think Jill has something real quick.
Oh, sure.
I'm, I'm assuming we kind of already touched on the next two questions, oh, sorry. On the next two questions, but I wanted to see if you could speak to what kind of tech support can we expect? And if you've, I know you've, or somebody has reached out to other schools, east and west of us that have gone through this. And what are the realistic, what's the realistic feedback that you've received? And I guess I'm thinking tech support for teachers and at home. Kids could probably figure it out.
Sure.
Is there parent, is there something that happens, you know, after 5 till bedtime if something's not working?
Right, I'm happy to talk about that. And I have 10 different ways that tech would support. The first one is the Tech Cafe, which was very successful when we rolled out the mobile devices for teachers. A number of our techs would go to the school right after school dismissed. And they would be there and teachers could come up and ask whatever question and get one-to-one support and get going on whatever it was they needed. Those worked really well last year. We work with principals to implement that. This year, principals said, we're just not having that many questions on their laptops. So we haven't been going out to do that. We would resurrect that, that would be happening on a monthly basis. We also have Atomic Learning, which is on-demand, online. You can go in and sometimes you may have just the tiniest question. The thing about Atomic Learning is you don't have to watch a full video. It's very granular, you can find out, how do I set up this cell in a spreadsheet? And it has a three-minute tutorial that walks you through it. So some people like to learn that way, so we do have that available. And we can create, I know Joe is working on creating classes in Atomic Learning on different things, frequently asked questions and those kinds of things to have available, the video tutorials. The next thing is the personal trainer, set up by appointment, which is Joe. He'll come out and work with you side by side. Just make an appointment and he will come out to the school and help you with whatever you need. We also want to have a parent camp where we talk about everything from how do I turn this thing on to digital citizenship. We want to have short, little tutorials and lots of things online that they can again access after they leave. Our counselors at the middle school are doing a really nice job with the digital citizenship so far, working in large groups, small groups. So we would continue with that. The tech team would be out in the schools as we roll them out in the beginning. We would bring.
No, our tech team, I was saying some of it was Apple coming in.
Right, no, our tech team would be out there when we rolled them out to help everyone learn just the basics. We did this when we rolled out our laptops. We went to each school. And Joe does a nice presentation on just the basics that you need to get started and get going. And so we would do that there as well. Another thing I think that makes Lawrence unique is that many school districts roll out one-to-one and no one's been in a one-to-one environment. No one's been in a technology-rich environment. At the middle school right now, we have 100-plus a few teachers that have either been in blended learning or the IPI. And so we have people that have training that can assist their colleagues, so they can call on them as well. We always have help desk. And I believe Angelique's going to speak a little about PD. And I believe Angelique's going to speak a little about PD tonight, too, what that PD would look like for them. As for the 24/7 help, that is one of the reasons why we are making this recommendation because there is an 800 number that parents or students could call to get tech support 24/7.
Is that, is it called Apple Care? Is that Apple Care or is Apple Care repairs? Or is it both?
It's both.
So, locally, we have the Apple station, I guess you'd call it, in the union, right?
Oh.
Is that our, does it have the kind, I mean, do you have to go all the way to Lenexa or something? If you have an issue and you need, like, an Apple appointment? Or you just, you just call and talk to them on the phone? Or, or I wonder if there's a way we could work with the space in the union to make it more like the, they have cute names for it in Kansas City, I don't know, Cafe or whatever it is that you go
Genius Bar.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we could certainly do that. I don't know that there will be a need because if you broke your iPad, I will issue you a new one.
I always send it to you.
Huh?
You take it.
Give it to me. We will send it in, get it repaired. We will give you a replacement to use in the meantime and then we'll get your iPad back to you. And because of that MDM, it'll shoot out just what you need. And that's another advantage to saving to the cloud. If you're saving your documents to the cloud, you'll have them there. You won't have to find a zip drive or something to make sure that you have those. Okay.
So, I have a couple more questions to follow up with what you learned from the other school districts that have done this.
Sure.
Particularly as it pertains to when they went one-to-one with iPads, did their technology support it? So, did their system support it? Did they have shutdowns? What were the pitfalls? And also, this idea of everybody being able to save stuff on the cloud and it can just so easily be accessed when you have, all, all of a sudden, you have thousands of, of kids on it? Did they have any issues with that and those types of things? So, like, how are we prepping for?
Okay, so, we have, Olathe has done a huge rollout of iPads. And so, I have connected with their tech department. And should we adopt this? They will come out. They're going to work with the principals and our tech team, talk about all of the pitfalls that they went through and some of the things that they think would help us maybe not have to go through those things and things to be aware of. So, they've agreed to come, I think it's April 20th or something, and walk us through that, help us out with that.
Jessica, were you talking more about, like, infrastructure, bandwidth, availability relative?
All of the possible, I mean, we haven't heard anything that could possibly go wrong.
Oh, well, we know things will go wrong.
Like, for example?
Things that could go wrong?
Yeah, I think it's good to get it out there.
Sure. So, the internet can go down and you have to have a backup lesson. And you have planned to have this lesson today and so you'll have to have a backup. That's something that can go wrong. Trying to think of other things, that's the biggest one, I think.
And that would, no matter what device we had, that would be an issue, so.
Absolutely. Right.
But iPad-specific, nothing that really kind of stands out as we're gonna have to be really, you know,
Crack screens.
paying attention on that, okay?
You know, kids dropping them. That's a biggie. The iPad typically, if something's not working, you turn it off and turn it back on and it reboots. It, it, there's less technical things that go wrong with an iPad than a laptop. There's more things that can go wrong with it, but. Joe, what are some other Help Desk issues that we hear? Because I'm trying to think
Sure.
the main issues that we hear there.
A lot of the big issues that we get on the Help Desk are related to students signing in and signing out the same computers all day, every day. And so, regardless of whatever device we happen to pick, that would clear up a lot of those issues because you wouldn't have, you know, twelve different students using the same computer all day. Along that same line of thought, some of the other issues, because iPads are a little bit different, would be training staff beforehand. And I, I know that Angelique will touch on that because that is a big piece. And then, lastly, from a infrastructure standpoint, we have that with Wireless Technology Team looking at it. We're confident we have the right tools in place. They're gonna show us how to get the tool set up correctly.
One more question, and I actually asked this, but I just kinda wanna get it out there.
Sure.
There's the, I understand we're gonna get, if we go the iPad route, we get the tint on the screen that is better for reading or the stress on your eyes.
Circadian rhythms, yes. So, 9.3, which was released today actually, has, it's built into the system. You just turn a button to enable it and maybe we can enable it from the MDM? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we can change those settings for sure remotely. And what's nice about night shift is what, that's what Apple calls their version of it is, you can set it up so every time the sun goes down, it turns on and it'll tint the screen a certain way. And I've had the beta the last couple of months trying it out. And like I've told Jerry, I don't know if it's a placebo effect or if it really makes a difference but I find myself getting sleepier around bedtime when I have it on. It, maybe it really works, but.
If it's a placebo effect, it doesn't matter.
I know, yeah. It's, it works for me.
What, kind of following up on that network question. One thing that I had heard someone say as we've been talking about this is that the, the network load caused by the different kinds of devices is different. Even if you have, even if you have your laptop and you're signed on all day. And, and I thought that was helpful to know that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the iPad
It's not so much wear and tear on the network.
The iPad is, takes up less, it's less hard on the network.
Mm-hmm.
And can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit? Because I, I don't know enough to understand it, but I thought that was a helpful fact to know in terms of our capacity.
And part of that, it also goes back to, if you have one student using that one iPad with iTunes U, if it, all these documents or resources are cached to that one device, they're gonna stay on that one device. They don't have to keep re-downloading the same thing over and over.
Okay, which is what happens when we have laptop.
Shared devices. That's what's really hard on the network.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, some of those files, if you sign into one computer, they might still be there the next time you come to it. Or they might be saved somewhere in the cloud or somewhere else. And so, all those different resources have to be pulled differently.
Would that be the same, this, same would be true if you were using one-to-one laptop? It's still, it's still, it's still
Less wear and tear on the network.
One-to-one is just easier on the network in general because you don't have that kind of, okay. All right, that's helpful.
Okay. Let's see. Have we hit off our questions and do we have?
Sure.
I got one.
We're not done. She means the question list.
Oh, sure.
You wanna go ahead, Marcel?
Yeah, it's just, one of the concerns I've heard is that the, some concerns is if the 64 gigabytes is enough for students throughout the course of the day, multiple classes, having to download different material texts and stuff. Is that adequate for what they generally would be doing, I guess, on a daily basis?
Right. It's four times the amount that we have now on the iPads that we have. And we will also want to train students to save to the cloud. And we have three different cloud services that are free to us that we can save to. So, we would like them to save as many things as possible to the cloud, but we believe that 64 will be plenty.
Do you have an example? So, like, say that I'm enrolled in, like, a blackboard blended class, right? For, like, mathematics. And so, how much information am I gonna cache when I'm in that classroom? Is it in terms of gigabytes?
It's gonna depend, just to tie on what the, what the resources. So, if it's a textbook, it's gonna depend on if it's just text that's in it or if it's pictures or if it's a full iBooks file. Or if it's video, it's gonna depend on if it's, you know, standard definition versus a full-length HD movie. It just depends on how the teacher sets it up in that course. And so, that's another reason why training is so important.
Okay, so the teacher will set it up to where it caches that particular chapter or that unit? So it's not like, let's put all the information? Okay.
Right.
What else?
I'm curious about the training piece, so.
Okay.
Sure. Oh.
Ready for that, then?
We will move on. Good evening, Angelique Nedved, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. You have a copy of this in front of you and this is a proposal for Learning Forward Future Ready, including both middle school and high school. So I'd like to take just a minute to highlight a few portions of this proposal that we believe will lead to an effective implementation. First and foremost, it was created in a partnership with multiple staff, including teachers and our association president. Teaching and Learning understands and is organizing this support to be a multi-year approach. As implementation doesn't end after the first year of rollout, more needs develop as usage increases. And we'll be prepared to address that and support beyond year one. Within the proposal, you'll find three levels of differentiated support for our staff. We have expected, extended opportunities, and specialized. And you heard some of those reference, Atomic Learning, Google Apps for Education. There are some conferences in there. You also heard, go ahead, Rick.
So, this is for high school and middle school. We've not made a decision about high school, about what we're going to do.
Correct. As I work through this, you'll understand why high school is listed here.
Okay.
In reference?
I wasn't seeing a reference to a device, but under specialized, there is. So, so if you could
Continue?
Sure.
Okay. So, after you see that we have three types of differentiated support, I encourage you not to think of this proposed support plan as complete, rather the beginning stages for our district and our building teams to enhance based on their discussions and feedback. You'll also see the beginnings of a task list for the teams to address within the proposal. And those are other areas that we see and expect some enhancements. Based upon a potential decision by the board this evening, our middle school and high school principals are poised to create their building teams, which will include teachers and administration in order to engage the proposal at a date that we feel is appropriate. And then, as noted throughout the proposal, the high school building teams will be invited to participate in as much as appropriate to gain the information they need during their considered proposal year or their investigation. So, you see an asterisk next to several of the middle school referenced items. This is an event to invite, invite them to, to have them participate as they explore throughout next year, if that is a decision. Does that help answer your question, Rick?
Sort of.
Okay.
But it, it, it looks like the opportunities for the high school teams are kind of oriented around the iPad.
Okay.
So, is there going to be equal opportunity for orientation around a laptop device?
Other devices, yes. And we have talked about that. That's why you don't see a device referenced in here. And again, those are some decisions to be finalized or more discreetly discussed once we get into those building and district teams. So, lots of encouragement to consider this as a proposal to get us jump-started into the conversation. And you'll see what's highlighted in yellow is already created, planned, or in progress. And then, again, the asterisk indicates this is something high school staff could benefit from. So, any questions?
So, just to clarify it, so, in the lease, we have, we're providing, we're providing iPads to the teachers at six through 12. But all of those teachers already have a laptop as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so they'll be, they'll be using both devices next year? And that's for all teachers at six through 12?
I believe that's the proposal.
Some of them, all of them, okay.
They all have laptops. They don't all have Mac laptops. There were some highs, there were a number of high school teachers, I think, that chose to stay with the Dell product. Is that right?
And we're gonna continue to allow that choice as teachers are coming on?
We have not had that discussion. That choice was very important to teachers. If you'll recall, when we rolled out the mobile devices for teachers, that was, that was important for teachers to have some choice.
Let me ask in the short term, so the new teachers that we bring into the district this fall, will they be choosing from?
I'm not able to answer that. I'm not sure what the choices are.
All right.
Good questions, though.
Right.
Do you know, Jerry?
Typically, we do allow them that choice. We have the MacBook and then we have a Dell product available.
Okay.
Thank you. So, each building team will be two or three individuals? Is that what I'm reading? Is that correct?
I think that's a little bit misleading, so I apologize. There will be two or three individuals coming from each building team to comprise the district team. So, each building team will be comprised of roughly nine to 12. We want to hit the core content areas, our essentials, and make sure we have very thorough representation at each building.
So, when I attended the tech talks with the middle school teachers, one of the concerns that the teacher, that several teachers brought up, and Marcel was in the room with me, so help me if I'm not paraphrasing this correctly, but was that, so a lot of them have spent a good deal of time, one of them was a Core Shell developer. So, developing the Core Shells and their concern is that it's not going to translate quickly or easily to an iPad format. Because previously, it was, you know, created on a laptop or something. Is there going to be district support to help transition those? Or, I guess, Jerry, your point was you could always open the Internet Explorer browser or the Safari browser or whatever and get to it from there and have the exact same experience that you would on a laptop. So, can you help me with that?
Yeah, good question. Some of the experiences that we have seen over the course of four years and having included iPads in the blended classrooms, you just don't get that broad view. So, it kind of truncates some of the information or it elongates it and students have to scroll through it, making the shortcut on the home screen to the URL. So, it looks just like an app is one way around that. And they are working on an updated version of an app that students can experience and actually provides a little bit more organization. But yes, if we got into a situation where a Core Shell just was not transferring at all, then Teaching and Learning would do the backend work to get that moved over. But we haven't experienced any big speed bumps along the way with that.
Okay, so there will be district support, though you're not anticipating having a lot of effort in that way because there's a late
No, no.
Certain problems.
Because we've had, we've had iPads in our, in our field tests throughout the initiation or the initiative of blended.
Angelique, at, at the session that I was in with Jessica at the tech meeting, we talked about digital textbooks. I think I had mentioned that somebody had told me at a site council that their textbook, the digital textbook they were using was not searchable and, and so, the kids were not super crazy about it. And that was confirmed and it sounded like it was an older version. And is there, I mean, are we gonna have some kind of guidelines? That, to me, seems like just very imperative function to have and I'd hate to roll out and have, hear about that.
Right. Part of our challenge has been playing catch-up with whether the device or the publisher has information that's appropriate for the device. And we're usually a, a little bit of a miss because they're not working together. They'll push out their content or you'll have a device-specific conversation. So, we did look up the information for middle school and it was the English Language Arts, six, seven, and eight. And we just adopted that three years ago. So, it gives you some indication of how rapid this information is changing. So, we are already in discussions with the publisher. A lot of times, they'll release a cartridge that allows for that, but they have to be built. This is more tech speak than I'm terribly familiar with. But that's my understanding is we can work with publishers if they're willing to release updated versions in the licenses that we have to make those upgrades, like searchable text. And you can jump from one chapter or a unit to the next. So, it's working around some of those, I know it's only three years old, but older resources that we have purchased in the very beginning of digital licenses and moving forward in our curriculum review process, knowing that if we're gonna have a specific device, we can engage the publisher in that kind of conversation. So, all of our conversations leading up to this point have been, how many devices does this work on, what it, what does it not work on? And then, making decisions with that information. Any other questions regarding this proposal for support?
So, can we pull up the slide again that had the unit per cost?
Sure. I'll need some help.
Does this have to do with professional development? Do you wanna ask Angelique? Okay, so are we done with professional development?
I assume that we were.
Okay, sure. Well, thank you, Angelique.
You're welcome.
And we'll ask Jerry to answer the cost question. Just wanna make sure you're getting the right person.
I appreciate your support. I appreciate your support.
Thank you.
So here's my concern.
Sure.
That, you know, this, the iPad is not going to prepare kids for college. College kids don't use iPads. I think the iPad is great for consumption, but I don't think it's very good for production. And it's not that you can't, but you know, if a kid has a choice to write a five-page term paper on a laptop or an iPad, they're going to choose the laptop. So I don't think it prepares them for college, because college kids don't use them for work. I don't think it's going to prepare them for high school, because, you know, they're not going to use this for work if they can avoid it. So I'm looking at the unit cost of the MacBook Air and the iPad, and I think the Chrome is a viable option nonetheless. But if we really want all of that, it's like, you know, the unit cost for the iPad, I'm sorry, the MacBook Air isn't really that much more than the unit cost for the iPad. So is it possible for us to bite the bullet, spend a little more money, figure out another way, that you can actually have all of the advantages that the iPad has, but you should give kids something that they actually want, something that they'll actually use for their actual work? And then I think everybody's happy.
Along the lines, what you referenced earlier, you know, I did the same survey, you know, in Carpool, at team practices, et cetera, 101. And I think most of the middle school, I know all of the middle school kids I asked said laptop. I didn't ask them, you know, if this device is twice as much, you know, but I would agree, most middle school kids would like to have a laptop, from what I've experienced. I guess where I'm at, and I, not that you're asking, but, is the cost. I would assume we'll have a discussion about high school at some point, and I think it's, a laptop is definitely something, a MacBook is what you have in your backpack when you go to college. Middle school's kind of that bridge, and I guess if it comes down to cost, I'm not, I'm kind of okay with sacrificing that, knowing that high school is going to be a different four-year set of tools and preparation. So, but I do appreciate your viewpoint, and I sort of agree, but that's just kind of how I bridge right now.
Yeah, I mean, I personally am struggling as well, and I'm trying to, so I think that kids, if you ask them, like I have, want a laptop. They think that that's like the normal thing that they need to have. And in polling teachers, like the majority of teachers I've talked to have said, please just make a decision. We need technology in our students' hands, so don't kick the can down the road, but rather get us some technology. And a lot of them say that they would prefer laptops. Some of them said that they'd prefer iPads, but it was a minority. Though, I will say that I kind of see the philosophy of teaching and learning, generally, when I look at it, I think a laptop is, it's more expensive, it's better, it's more robust, it does more things, it has more functionality. And then the iPad is this kind of like laptop light, that personally, I've never been able to incorporate in my life, because it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Like, it seems like a too large of a smartphone or something. But I recognize that that's a little bit different for some students, and I think that the way that some of the blended learning classrooms are changing, and the way that some of those iPad initiatives are going, the iPad actually might be a better device in some respects than a laptop for certain things. And so I'm trying to keep an open mind with that recognition, that in some ways, this might actually be better for some learning that we want to be happening in our classroom. And so it's not necessarily, let's pay a little bit more and buy a better device. In the way some people look at it, let's pay less and buy a better device. And so I'm still struggling with whether or not that's the right choice, and I recognize that we have to make a decision, or we're looking to make a decision tonight so that we can get, start this rollout process. But I'm still struggling a little bit with that and with how it works. And I have to say, I have gotten, you know, mixed reviews from teachers about what that looks like, which I recognize. We have professional development that will hopefully get people all to recognize how they can use this in a way that is helpful for students to learn.
But is there, is there something that, I mean, you referenced that for some classroom applications, the iPad might be better. So is there any classroom application that you can anticipate that the iPad really is, gives you something that, say, for example, a MacBook Air could not give you?
A lot of students are showing they're learning through videos and creating videos and those kinds of things. With the iPad, there's actually two cameras built in. It's kind of hard to walk down the hall and videotape with a laptop, whereas it's portable, but it's not mobile. So the iPad is really easy for them to use to create those kinds of evidence of learning. And we've seen a lot of that in the middle schools. Middle school kids kind of like to be up and about and doing those kinds of things, and teachers are finding that they can show the evidence of learning in other ways.
That's, and I appreciate that, but that's a, that's a very specific example, where it's more awkward to do with a laptop. But are there, I'm just trying to get a general sense for-
The FLIR energy, thermal imaging app?
Pardon?
The FLIR, that FLIR thermal imaging app?
Oh, yes.
That's one example.
I mean, another example is that the iPad automatically, with the iTunes University, like caches those course materials in a way that I don't think the MacBook Air does, or does it?
Right. And the teacher can't just push it out to you. Each student would be, would have to individually download everything. This way, the teacher pushes it out, it's there, we know they have it.
So I think it does make it more streamlined for students to take home the materials that they need to work on without Wi-Fi access with an iPad versus the MacBook. Though I think that there are workarounds where we could make it-
So that is a fact, that with a MacBook, you can't push out the content? That's a fact.
Right. They would have to download each thing separately. I was also going to say, the augmented reality is being used a lot in science classes, where you can actually look at the heart with an app. It uses a code, and you just put your iPad over it. You can see the heart beating, you can see all of the blood vessels and the arteries, and you can see how all of that works. It brings things to life right there on the iPad. That would be one thing you could do. There's like the dissections that you can do in science. Right. Mm-hmm. So there are, yes.
Yeah, Shannon?
I guess I just, I was going to add, obviously, we each come out these decisions with a whole lot of personal experience and things that are coloring our thinking. And I guess for me, I'm actually a pretty heavy iPad user. I very, very rarely get out my laptop anymore. And so I, I have not had as much trouble envisioning how this would be useful, because I'm using my own iPad that way. Now, I do recognize that if I want to sit down and write a letter to somebody that I then want to print out and sign, I don't usually do that on my iPad. I will use the laptop. But I think one of the things that makes, gives me some comfort about the proposal is that we're not taking that laptops out of the school, and so kids will still have access to that technology when they need it for that sort of thing.
Yeah, the thing that surprised me the most was talking to the two ELA teachers at my daughter's school that I just briefly interviewed, and they actually were the ones that were pushing for an iPad. And they said, if they need to type a term paper, we'll just get the laptop cart and have them use that for that time. And so there's other things, other content to read and whatnot, but I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
So I guess the other thing I was just going to add into that is, you know, I've got a fifth grader who's going into middle school, and, you know, we have both devices in our house, where I, that's, I realize that's a very fortunate thing. He is, he uses iPad almost exclusively. And so I'm not having any trouble picturing the kids using this for school and other things in the way that we're talking about. You know, obviously, I've had a lot of questions. I think that the thing that will make this work or not work is really going to be the support and the training that we do. And unless we do a really good job with that, it doesn't matter which device we pick, it's going to flop. So, you know, I, that's just, you know, in choosing a device, I have a little less angst about it than maybe other board members are experiencing, so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Shannon.
So, you know, and we're fortunate as well. We have both of those. My concern is families who are not fortunate, and that if this is going to be the only device to bring it home, I think they, and if they have to write a paper, for example, I think that's going to be problematic for them.
Joe ran up to get examples of the two keyboards that we have, because I wanted to show you what those look like, too.
And keyboards are something that students would be able to check out and take home as well? So from the library, not just for in-school use?
Yes. Ah, so here's one. It would sit like that. If you chose some, you could pass it around. It's a nice-sized keyboard. It's not- And then we have just the flat ones as well.
So Jerry, I know that if we make a decision tonight or by a really soon date, we need to make the decision in order to qualify for some discounted pricing or whatnot. Can you talk more about that?
Sure.
And this idea that if we were, if there's an idea that we want to explore laptops instead, or something like that, what we'd miss out on by not deciding tonight?
Sure.
And if there's a bit of a delay in the decision, could we still implement for next year? Or what's the time at which we have to make a choice, or else this isn't going to happen, because we won't be able to have the devices in the kids' hands for fall?
Okay. And while you're answering that, can you also, like, talk a little bit about what would happen to all of these iPads if we decide this isn't really working in the middle schools? Have we wasted all this money, or would we have a better, can we find a use for them at the elementary level, for example?
Oh, certainly. We could use them at the elementary level, and if you wanted to sell them back, you could do that as well. So, or sell them to a third-party company. By purchasing before Friday, we would save $432,500. Now, if we just changed the iPads to Macs, and it was the same order, which might not all be the same, I asked them what that would be, and this hasn't been run through and approved or anything, but I can just give you numbers.
Sure.
So it would be 1.3 million more for all laptops.
So, so 1.3 million more? What's the, what's the total?
So if you purchased laptops instead of iPads, the same number. So I do have the quote with me. So our price is $3,158,177.50, which the lease is 80,000, I have it in here somewhere, around 80,000 a year. Or 801-
The lease payment's 801,249.
There you go.
Forty-eight each, for each year.
So that additional 1.3 million would be spread, then, over the same four-year timeframe?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we are, I'm sorry, we are looking at like a four-year replacement cycle as well, right? So basically, at the end of the lease, then those devices would be either sold back or used for different purposes, and we would be renewing likely to continue-
That's right. I will tell you that we have some five-year-old iPads in the district that we are still using, and we have loaded the current OS on them. So they're still working for us. If that gives you an indication of how, but they're not being taken home, there'll be more wear and tear with that.
Sorry, go ahead.
I had, I'd like to just go back. We've had a pretty extensive conversation about iPads versus laptops, and I am just curious. So I did some quick calculation, or quick search, and this is probably not very scientific, but, you know, the business world, the PC world, about 80% of operating system is Windows. So if the children are only exposed to Apple, they're not going to have that option. And then back to the business environment, Linux servers, 79% of the server environment is Linux. So if we're only showing them Apple OS, they're going to be missing out on being prepared for the business world. And I get that we're talking about their, their teaching and academic environment, but that's not going to be as helpful if they, once they get out and they graduate, then they don't know how to operate the machines that the majority of the world uses. And I would just like to see if there's some sort of proposal. I'm carrying in my backpack right now a $400 laptop that I've had for several years. It's very adequate. I'm a successful businesswoman. I operate all of my business on this laptop. I cannot imagine that a middle schooler would need to use more than what I'm doing. So, and I bought that commercially at Micro Center. So I'm sure if we got in a bulk purchase, there's something that we could do to get an even better rate. Came preloaded, we wouldn't have to touch any of the devices. And so I just want to know if there's anything that we looked at that was not Apple?
So we did. We looked at, we did.
Right, but Chromebook is not, in my opinion, a good option for this.
And the Dells. And we have those in the district, and we did look at those again, and the price point was about the same. But we had so many teacher Apple devices in the district, we thought that that would be yet another change-
Okay.
-to move from that. But Chris, I think that is an important consideration as we look at the high school, is do we want to open them to a new environment? I think that's a good consideration.
And that's something that maybe we can readdress this situation, because I would like to make sure that we're not just looking at proprietary software systems, that we're looking at something where we're teaching these children to go out and explore, and an open OS is really all, is really what it's going to facilitate. It's going to invite them to look inside their computer and create and make, you know, we've got these new middle, elementary schools with their maker centers.
Sure.
And they can't create on these devices if their OSes are locked down.
So we do have two public comments. Can we go ahead and take those? And that won't stop discussion, but let's give them a chance to speak. Let's, first, it's Matthew Herbert. And I think you might know the drill, but three minutes, and Janice is our timekeeper.
I'll talk fast.
Thank you.
Superintendent Dole, members of the board, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. A lot of my comments will be directed towards high school. I teach at Lawrence High School, but I believe that my comments will also transfer over into a middle school environment just as well. Many of my comments have been said by Professor Ingram already, so I appreciate your comments this, this evening. But several years ago, as we talked about a bring-your-own-device model being employed, many of us at the high school level grew very leery about how such a model would be employed within a district that, that said that equity was a primary initiative, that there is nothing equitable about a bring-your-own-device model. So I want to first applaud you on the fact that we're looking at a one-to-one rollout. One-to-one will allow us to have an initiative that will be compatible with an equity initiative as well. However, anecdotally, I want to have a little bit of conversation about what happens within our actual environment. What you do is dictate policy. What we do is actually enact it. So I want to give you a view into our bubble as a teacher and how this actually looks. I keep hearing all, this evening, about how we're still going to have these laptops available for students to use. The reality of the situation is we're in an educational environment right now where we're constantly testing. And when we have testing occurring in a building, laptops are locked down. They're unusable. We haven't had access to laptops in classrooms at Lawrence High for weeks because of state testing. And if the English, if we have English state testing, all of the laptops go there. So this notion of these laptops still being readily available, they're not readily available now. That's just the reality of the situation. But anecdotally, three weeks ago, I had my own district-issued laptop kind of blackout on me, right? Called the help desk, went through that whole process. It was a four-day turnaround from, from broken to repaired, which is fine. I'm not complaining about that. But realize when we scale this, we're talking about a building right now where we have a couple hundred devices that don't physically leave the building unless they're leaving with a, a professional educator. And we're going to scale that to suddenly, we're going to have 1,400 devices at a high school that go home every night. You know, I think about my own experience as a 13, 14-year-old. You get on the bus, you throw your bag in your seat. We're going to be talking about having to scale our tech support to an unbelievable level. And I want to make sure that we're not putting the cart before the horse, that we actually have the tech support available so that when we do this, when as teachers we begin to implement this, we have that tech support backing. The comment was made that it's fine if one breaks, the teacher can just check out another one. But realize, again, the environment we're in right now, we're not even allowed to have classroom sets of textbooks. And these are textbooks, you know, my civics book still has President Clinton in office, and it talks about a budget surplus. So this is not a highly valuable piece of material, and we're not even entrusted to have a classroom set of those. So I find it very odd that we would be suddenly entrusted to have a classroom- So I find it very odd that we would be suddenly entrusted to have a classroom set of extra devices. So I implore you, don't put the cart before the horse. Make sure we have the tech support before we have the tech. So thank you.
Thank you. And next we have John Rosen.
Hi, if I could address a couple of specific concerns. Dr. Ingram, I recently wrote a 100-page novel on an iPad, also about using the same computer in middle school as at college. Well, my, the schools I bore in middle school did not fit me at college. I think there's a big gap in between. In going digital, USD 497 has taken on two separate responsibilities, ensuring that students have sufficient access to a tablet and computer, and ensuring that all students have sufficient access to the Internet. 5,000 iPads will transform the middle schools. I strongly support the iPad decision. There will be complaints. We've heard some tonight. Arguments about computers and operating systems energize people more than arguments about basketball teams and pizza chains. The board will hear about what's wrong with iPads, among them stunted growth and bad hair days. That's a fact. Maybe, but remember that students with an Apple or with a PC or with any other device can read textbooks, compose documents, create spreadsheets, check Twitter feeds, and learn far, far too much about Kim Kardashian. The device does not make much of a difference. Anything is better than nothing at all. Standardizing on iPads will keep it simple and will save time and money. And when teachers needs tech support, they'll be able to ask the kids. The kids will provide a lot of it. I urge the board to adopt a second new priority, ensuring that all students have sufficient Internet access. Inadequate Internet access traps many students on the wrong side of the digital divide. The easiest solution, which Jerry mentioned, is the cheapest, the Kajit. No one knows now how many students lack sufficient Internet access, regardless of the number, school starts in August. And USD 497 will not really go all digital unless students can access the Internet, especially access at home. Thank you. And by the way, I have two kids. They've graduated from the Lawrence schools, and they're doing quite well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we can continue discussing, or if someone wants to make a motion, we could continue discussing after that if anyone's prepared to do that. Yes?
I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Before anybody makes a motion. And I guess it's for Angelique, which, if you don't mind.
Still here.
It goes back to the issue of, you know, getting the professional development, but also to Mr. Herbert's point of how we will really, how this will really be on the ground. So how will we, over the course of the next 12 months, while we're looking into how this is going to happen in the high schools, how are we going to be really fully assessing what's going on in the middle schools and whether or not it's functioning? What, I guess my concern is getting kind of only the good news here. We're not in the buildings, and I feel like that's sometimes what's happening is we get a lot of good news here, but then we go talk to people and the news isn't as good. And so I want to make sure that there's some sort of clear assessment that we're actually hearing about how it's rolling out, how the professional development's taking place, what's going on when the kids are losing, breaking, leaving their laptops, are their iPads home?
Not having access to textbooks.
Not being able to access the information so that teachers are spending half of the class time trying to figure out what's going on with the students who didn't bring their iPad today or who can't get on for some reason. So those are, I guess, I mean, that really ultimately more than the item itself. I don't really care if it's a laptop or an iPad. I just want to know for sure that our teachers are going to be supported in a classroom with either device. And that's what I'm hearing is the biggest concern from all teachers. I mean, Mr. Herbert's just one of many I've heard that from.
Yeah, and thank you for the question. I think that it's the most important component. I agree, regardless of the device selection. That's why I feel and we believe that having the building-based teams comprised, I would say 90% by teachers who are experiencing it in the classroom day-to-day with their students, having that as a feedback source and information and a needs assessment. And then I would even invite them to come and give you updates and straight from them, not, you know, something we've scripted for them to say. So you hear a holistic approach to what the experiences have been in the classroom and the building. That would be my recommendation. So starting these teams, I think will give us the opportunity to have this discussion. You know, how and what do we do with the feedback and what warrants action? What are our next steps? Which is why this is a proposal without laying out a recipe for these teams. I think once we get our staff on these teams, they're really going to give us a lot of direction and share much of what you heard in the sessions and you may be continuing to hear. But they can give us a lot of that information. So it's going to be a lot of listening, I think, on our part. And so we can further define what that support will look like.
And they will be heard as well.
That's my plan.
Okay. I think that's really important. That's a really important piece of this, is that they're actually heard.
Absolutely. Nope, we don't want to bring them together to just give them lip service.
I think in the interest of moving the conversation along, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion, and then we can discuss the motion.
Sounds good.
All right. I move the Board of Education approve a resolution authorizing the district to purchase from Apple Inc. $3,158,177.50 of Apple technology per their education price quote, authorizing the district to enter into a lease purchase transaction with Apple in order to finance the equipment, and authorizing various district officials to execute documents necessary to acquire and finance the equipment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, just one quick thing I was going to say.
No, no, we have plenty of time for discussion, so go ahead.
This is not question or anything. It's just my opinion. I would feel more comfortable if we did a percentage. I'm not saying that I have anything against Apple Mac. I just don't like the closed platform. I would feel more comfortable if we could come up with something that could both allow those who feel comfortable on that platform and also bring, even if it was just one other OS. I would propose an open one, but I know that there's more support for Windows, so thanks.
I think part of the benefit is to have it standardized so that it's all, like everyone's using the same thing and all the professional development is geared towards the same product. And so I hear what you're saying, but I think if there were two options, then I think that would cause a lot of complications for teaching and learning and for teachers in terms of the rollout.
I think that it would be in the best interest of the student. I do hear and I do understand, I do know that there are plenty of shops, plenty of places that do support both. Many environments support both very well. And that would just be, we may need to train our technology people to better support. So I think that that would be something we could look into.
Shannon?
I guess what I would say about that is I think Jerry had the right of it in saying, look, this is the conversation to have at the high school level rather than the middle school level. That's one of the reasons why I wanted to go ahead and get the motion out there. I actually do feel pretty comfortable with saying, you know, at the middle school level with these kids, six, seven, eight, we're gonna, we're just going to focus on one thing. And then, you know, have that conversation if we want to have a broader set of options at the high school. Think that, I personally feel like, you know, looking at my kids, this is a more age-appropriate approach with someone who's coming up into sixth grade. I just, I, as a parent, feel more comfortable with this. For one thing, it's something that I'm familiar with. So I know, I know Microsoft, I know Apple, I know how to help my kid with it at home. If we're going to choose Apple, you know, I just, I see that as a, as kind of a win on both sides at this level. But I do think we should continue that discussion with the high school rollout question.
So Jerry, I have a quick question about, so obviously, right now, we're tackling this idea of middle school. And then next year, we're studying the issue of one-to-one at high school. Is one-to-one at elementary, like, I mean, is getting more devices in elementary schools part of some sort of rollout plan? Or have we not really tackled that beast quite yet? Is that really only happening in the blended discussions currently?
We're rolling it out for the blended, but we hope to repurpose some of the things to the elementary so that they will have more prices than they would have in the plan.
So after kind of the four-year rollout? Or basically because kids are getting one-to-ones at middle schools, there's iPads there that can go down to the elementary school? Okay, that makes more sense. Thank you. And then Jessica's point, so say we vote tonight, we go with the iPad initiative, we're working through this professional development plan, things are going pretty well, but we find, you know, everyone thinks iPads would have been a better strategy. It's not like we would throw them away. They would probably find a nice home at elementary schools or maybe in the sixth and seventh grade, but we could get laptops for eighth graders if we find that those devices might be better in a one-to-one environment. So I mean, there are a lot of, we're not like making a set-in-stone decision that is going to keep us locked into this for the rest of eternity, right?
Right.
Okay, I think that's an important thing also to recognize. And then, of course, there's going to be a lot of hiccups in terms of the rollout and how they work and all of those things. But sometimes it's a matter of just figuring that out as you go as opposed to figuring everything out, making sure it's all perfect, and then going for it because you're never going to get there specifically. So I don't know, I guess those are some ideas that I have in my head that I wanted to clarify, and it sounds like. Okay, what else? Questions or comments?
Jerry, can you just briefly address the concern about the tech? Are we, do we have enough staff to support the, you know, the one-to-one rollout at the middle school? Whatever problems occur, the 3% breakage, other support issues? Do you feel that we have the staff adequate to support that?
Jerry, why don't you come, if we're being videotaped, we always have to remember whether they can hear that or not.
Luckily, I do so much talking. Everyone knew what Jerry was saying.
We certainly would like to add more staff if we can.
One of the ideas that we are working on as well is having a student tech team that could help support as well, and we would train those students and have them as support in the buildings as well. But to answer your question, we would not turn down additional building costs.
Yeah, I don't know that I was offering that.
Put that in the motion.
We'll ask the legislator to fund that for us.
That's right.
And then how about the, just the laptop availability relative to testing?
Well, at the middle school, it'll be much better because everyone will have a device.
And they can do it on their device.
And then the 500 MacBooks are going to the two high schools.
I think it's, I think it's, we need to be clear, though, that what Matt was talking about is true. I mean, there are, during the, in particular, during the testing window, those devices do get eaten up, which is a, another reason to, whatever device you choose at the high school next year, another reason to go the one-to-one, and that, in a sense, solves that problem. But Matt's right, and you know, so you need to know that, that even in the good times, it may be hard to get the cart, but almost impossible during testing. Now, if we tested less, maybe that wouldn't be.
We'll go ahead and get the legislature on that, too, and the feds. Okay, are we prepared to vote? Janice?
Campbell?
Yes.
Sanford?
Yes.
Adair?
No.
Beeson?
Yes.
Incher?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
No.
Thank you. Excellent discussion. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, next we have Kyle Hayden back up to approve some bond construction bids.
Okay, Kyle Hayden, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations. I'll try to make this fairly quick, but we have two packages to approve tonight. The first one deals with what we called Package 3A. And when we were organizing this, and that includes Broken Arrow, Prairie Park, Quail Run, and Sunflower Elementary Schools. Recognizing that a lot of work has been done at Quail Run already, there's just an additional piece of some minor remodeling that we wanted to have done and needed to wait until this point to do that. So in general, first of all, these are our final two bids and final two projects to approve. So yeah, celebration. And bids on both of these were very favorable. And so we hit our budget targets. We were able to capture all of our intended outcomes. And even some items that had previously appeared on the capital improvement plan, we were able to capture those two and address those using our bond funds. So once again, I think that's another positive celebration. So to kind of walk through just some quick design, I want to show you just site plan schematic, a couple 3D images of these, and we'll move on. So this is Sunflower Elementary School project. This will begin as soon as school gets out. The dark image here is, shows the building addition. We actually have to demolish a couple classrooms to build this. We actually found that it was the most efficient way that we could spend our dollars to get this layout and make it work on the site. So you see the building addition there, really five classrooms. That includes two, what we call structurally, we're now referencing as structurally enhanced classrooms to allow for safe shelter areas for enough, all of our students and staff to be in those spots. So the lighter color that you see throughout is just some minor renovation, so flooring. Typical to what we've done in a lot of our projects is we put the polished concrete throughout the corridors. In the learning pocket areas, you'll have, you'll still have carpet. And there'll also be furniture components that we've added, just like we have in a lot of other schools. Another main component to this is a fairly significant remodel to the center of the school, which is the current office areas, and those are going to be relocated. So this area right here becomes most of our student intervention services, our special education courses are taught there, our special education staff are housed here in multiple areas. And then the office relocation happens right up here. We had originally talked about an addition to the building. Budget didn't really allow us to do that, but we were also able to just capture the space we had there in a different way. So once again, and a lot of walls will be tore down and then reconstructed to fit the type of space we have. And then the other component that's been a standard for us is the safe entry. So folks will enter, will have to be buzzed into the office area before they're allowed into the school. Some other components on Sunflower, just to make sure I highlight. We've had roof issues at Sunflower, so this calls for a full roof replacement. We have some traffic flow issues just with, because of, it's a, there's a lot of students here. So we're addressing some of that, some parking also that will help with just the mobility throughout the campus. This increases the capacity of Sunflower to 600 students, which is another bonus in an area that has potential for growth. We're not seeing it right now, but there's potential for growth in that area of our city, so. Some 3D images of the addition. You see there will be some contrast a little bit to the materials, but much like we have in a lot of our additions, but it'll still blend really well. No questions on Sunflower. I'll move to Quail Run. Okay, Quail Run, the majority of the work was done last year, and then we did a building addition there also that was up in this area. What this just represents is that we're doing some carpet replacement and paint in all of our classrooms, including the library media center area. And we'll flip some furniture also. For Prairie Park Elementary, most of the work is in the office area. Once again, the safe entry component. Really, the office will be almost completely gutted. And so the flow of it will be much different to accommodate the safe entry. And then also, we have some restroom remodels where we have new flooring, the epoxy flooring, new fixtures, new paint, new partitions. And then the floors, once again, and main corridors will be polished concrete. And then in the learning pockets, so this is a building that has, and Sunflowers, too, has already existing. too, has already existing really nice learning pocket areas, we'll add some furniture components there, and those will be carpeted also. But, I think that the, the thing that's gonna change dramatically for Sunflower and for Prairie Park will just be the functionality, hopefully, of the learning pockets based on the type of furnishings that we have there. I think that will enhance those buildings from an educational standpoint. And then when we look at Broken Arrow Elementary School, most of the work here is in the core of the building, and the safe entry is a component for this, and a little minor remodel to the, to the office area that you can see right here. So this is, this, this is the entryway. Once again, on the corridors, this will be polished concrete. As we move into this main area, we're gonna keep this as a carpet area, because just acoustically, it wouldn't necessarily work very well. Broken Arrow I describe as a really hard building, and it, it's just a lot of hard surfaces, hard ceilings, you know, hard walls, not a lot of natural light there, which we wish we could've maybe addressed that component with Broken Arrow, which dollars wouldn't necessarily allow us to do that. It's a, it's a bigger, bigger expense than even what was planned for in the budget for, during the bond planning process, so. But, major reconfiguration to where the restrooms become in the centerpiece instead of out here on the edges, they were in little, small spaces, and makes them ADA accessible, much more user-friendly. And then, once again, transforming that whole area with furniture components and, and things to make it more just educationally friendly for our students. You see here, this is a dark area, I think this is a really nice added feature for Broken Arrow. Currently, it's, it's not ADA accessible, there's a multiple levels that go from the main cor, classroom area down to the cafeteria, so a lift has to be used for anyone that, that couldn't use the stairs, or they'd have to go outside and around the building. And so, this will be a ramp, and there'll be, actually be some transparency that goes from that major learning pocket area in the middle through to the gym. So, you know, similar to Quail Run, when you walk in the entryway now, you have transparency that allows you to see through into the gymnasium space, so. And that'll allow for, hopefully, the gymnasium to not feel so constricted, too, 'cause it's a small gymnasium space. And then the other component from an ADA accessibility issue would be the music room. It currently has a tiered floor, and so we will level that out and make it much more user-friendly. There's a 3D image of, of that ramp at Broken Arrow. That's Package 3A. And that's up for approval, do you wanna-
Right, if someone would like to make the motion?
I just had a really quick question before we go to approval, sorry. There's a pretty distinct difference in the technology prices between these three schools? I guess there's four, but there's just three of them that have technology components. Can you tell me why Sunflower is so much higher? What are we doing different there?
I think it's just, it's the amount of additional work, because by tearing down a couple classrooms and then building a fairly significant addition, that's where a lot of those dollars are wrapped up in. Whereas in the other buildings, it's just because there's not an addition and a major remodel, we're just enhancing what's already there.
So does this include the, the pulling of the wire, or is this the technology itself? The, what, what part of the technology is that?
So it will be some additional pulling of wire, it will be upgrading capacity as far as switches and access points.
Okay, it just seems-
Along with security cameras and things of that nature.
It seems like a really high number for just an elementary school, unless we were redoing the entire school.
On Sunflower? Is that what you're speaking to?
Yes, yeah, the four, I'm sorry, $40,000 for a technology package. It just seems high for some servers and wire, and even if we added wireless equipment.
I, I don't know if I'd agree with that, that, and once you add labor in and everything, I think that's, I mean, there's some significant work there at Sunflower relative, and-
Okay, and that's, I guess, what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. This is something I do in my business, so I know how much the labor costs. Sorry, I'm leaning in too high on this. So I just wanted to know what, what all that included, the technology part?
Well, I don't have the specific scope to that, I guess. I could go back to the construction documents and, and share all of those details. I would say the number is consistent across all of our projects to this point, so I'm not, I'm, it's not anything that has been glaring to me, so, and this is the, what, the-
Last one.
Seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, so.
All right, thanks.
All right, well, I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Education approve the owner-construction-management-at-risk-services agreement with McCown Gordon Construction in the amount of $5,906,380 due to the bids associated with the bond construction at Broken Arrow, Prairie Park, Quail Run, and Sunflower Elementary Schools. Second.
Okay, Janice? Or any more discussion? Okay, Janice?
Sanford?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Beeson?
Yes.
Inshur?
Yes.
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 So I pulled up Pinckney, and this is our last one to show you tonight, and last one to show you, period. So, when we look at Pinckney Elementary School, conceptually, this kind of gives you the idea of, of how things materialized, and it's similar, I would, I would call it, to Hillcrest Quarterly, where we're reorienting the entry. And so the entry will be back to the original, where you're coming off the original construction off of Sixth Street. And, really focused, once again, similar to other projects, on the core of the building, and what functions around the core. And so the primary function of, you know, where a lot of students congregate will be for the commons area, which we've always tried to use, the commons area is almost another large learning pocket, so it's, you know, has components of it that you can actually instruct the entire student body, and if you wanted to, in some capacity. And then also, our library media center on the second floor, so, I wanna show you those two components. First of all, this is the site plan, actually, you guys have probably seen this more than you wanted to.
Get it out of there.
So I, I don't necessarily need to run through this. I will tell you that we have gone through the whole tunnel closure issue. The tunnel will remain open during construction, there will be intermittent times that we'll request that the city allow us to close it, and so, and I think we have a good communication partnership to make that plan happen when we need to and, and plan ahead, and then that we would disseminate that information to the Pinckney neighborhood, so that they would know the timeframes that we're looking at. There will be, and, and those will be just intermittent short times, and then there'll be an extended time as we get towards the end of construction, so when you go out to spring of 2017, so a year from now, as we're getting to final site plan and area, and, and that front area, the, the new front area around the tunnel, we'll look at closing it down for potentially a couple months, so. The first floor, floor plan, so this is, this is the, the new, would be a south entry into the school. And immediately, you're, you're in the office area, you have the safe entry component, and, and it goes directly into what I was talking about, what we're calling a dining and learning commons space, where they actually have a learning pocket and stage, elevated stage area for student assemblies and things of that nature. You can see periodically around clusters of classrooms, we, once again, have cut out learning pockets, so it's a very similar things to what you've seen in our other schools, and where you have transparency from the classroom into those learning pockets. Get a completely remodeled kitchen that will be a full-service kitchen. If you look at the second floor floor plan, once again, what I'd showed you before, that media and technology center will be in the core of the building, just above the, the new commons and learning space. You can see the addition over here, and I'll show you that from a massing standpoint, from a visual, in just a second. This shows you looking from the west to the east, so if you're standing on the playground looking at the addition, you can see the connection between the existing building right here is going to be a really nice glass transparency that you would see through the staircase as you change levels from the commons learning space up to that second floor, and then a nice two-story addition. And all of this, from a, from a material standpoint, has gone through the historical, local historical commission that reviews projects. Here's a 3D image, interior rendering of, of the new corridor as you're walking into the school, and I'm looking at the commons area to your right, and then the staircase that would go up. And then also, this shows the media and technology center. These photos of, are of our existing new media technology spaces at different schools, and those will be incorporated into this plan and design. You can see some of the common themes, once again, you know, having a learning pocket, having a genius bar instead of a large circulation desk. We do away with, there's no library media offices, it's all about kids and kid spaces, maker space, along with reading areas, low-level shelving that is mobile, and so, very functional space, space that can be transitioned to multiple, multiple uses very quickly. This is a 3D rendering of our media center.
Is the genius bar part of the library, or what's, what is that?
So, the genius bar is, is basically where the kids go to check out their materials, which is much like you would see in our, our community library, so it's, and self-check, and they can pull up on a stool and sit there, too, on a device, or with a book, so. We're not serving coffee or anything, though. That's all I've got there.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about this one? Okay, Janice?
Adair?
Yes.
Yes.
Inshur?
Yes.
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 Campbell?
Yes.
Sanford?
Yes.
The motion has a seven zero.
And our final four item agenda meeting, luckily, I don't have to do it, because Chris is here. So, I was basically, put this on the agenda to communicate the correspondence that I had with Chris, and she was like, "Oh, dear." And said, "This is our first opportunity or meeting, it's been a professional meeting, and it's executive meeting," and so, I was, I was, I was, I was just a word about.
Was unable to attend several meetings because my company was accepted, we were the first Kansas company to be accepted into the Techstars Accelerator, and we have been working through a very rigorous 90-day program that will culminate on demo day, May 4th, May 24th. And so I am working in Kansas City every day, we're working 16-hour days some days, seven days a week, so, it's not something that I had planned for, it's not something that I had wanted to interrupt my board commitment, but it's an incredible opportunity. And for those that don't know, Techstars is a global accelerator program that has, the graduates of the program raise an average of $3.9 million for their rounds. They have nine out of 10 companies either still in operation or have been acquired. That's much lower than the regular small-business community, so it's something that I found was valuable for our, my company, and I had to miss some meetings during mentor madness. We were at the accelerator from, like I said, 16-hour days some days.
And your correspondence to me, you had indicated that you might take a break, are you no longer considering doing that?
It would be to my benefit if I could take a few days off, but it was a few meetings off, I was hoping to miss as few as six meetings. It was suggested to me that that was not an option. The commitment that I made to the school board is important enough to me that if I must attend all of the meetings in order to make my commitment, I will be at the board meetings. I do have to schedule my work environment around that, so when my meetings are done, I will have to go and finish my work. It would be more beneficial, I believe, for my betterment and to allow me to come back and bring to the school board all of the knowledge that I gained here if I could miss a few meetings. But like I said, I was given the impression that that was not an option, so if, if I must, in order to continue, I will.
Okay. The last thing we have this evening is, after our superintendent deliberations, we talked about sending a thank-you note to each of the members of the committees, and Julie, lovely Julie, put these together for us. So, I was thinking, there's 71, and I was thinking we could sign them, and then she will mail them off. Is that something that people wanna stay and do? Okay, I will sign and hand to Marcel, and we'll just keep the chain going for a few minutes here, until we finish. Oh, should we adjourn first? Okay, then I will entertain that motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.